Well, let's call this meeting to order. It is 1:02. Welcome, everybody, from sunny Louisville, Kentucky, or a hotel room in sunny Louisville, Kentucky. That's where I am. And let's, Max, can you start us off with a roll call?
Certainly. Laurel Hudson is absent today. Chair Scott McCollum is noted as present. Nadira Broom.
Present.
Lillian Goodman.
Present.
Alan Labrum.
Present.
Stephanie McGary.
Present.
Cassie Trusper. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum. The meeting can proceed.
Excellent. All right. I hope my audio is working and continues to work. I am in a hotel room, and you never know how these things will go. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Max said I sound better than ever, so we'll go with that. Next thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And so I know these were all sent out to all of us. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to read them, and I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Stephanie. We've got a motion to approve the minutes. And is there a second?
This is Cassie. I'll second.
Thank you, Cassie. We've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we've got audience introduction. Max, I'm sure you can help us in that way. Max, you're muted.
I'd like to start by introducing Deisha Johnson, our executive director. Angel Hale is our Director of Vocational Rehabilitation Services. Kat Martin is the CFIO, Chief Financial and Information Officer. Jim Portillo is the Director of the Orientation and Career Center for the Blind. Jonathan Scrimenti is the Workforce Innovation Manager. Today, we're missing Ron Stewart, the Business Enterprises Program Director, but Deisha will be making his report. I'm gonna begin pointing to other staff and ask them to introduce themselves and followed by audience members. Chantel, would you like to start, please?
Sure. I work at OCB as one of the Business Relations Coordinators.
Thank you. Sherry Lauer. You're muted, Sherry.
Sorry. Good afternoon. I'm Sherry Lauer. I am a Client Agency Human Resource Manager that supports the agency. I work for the Department of Administrative Services. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Mary Michelle, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Mary Michelle Sosny, and I'm Commission for the Blind's Budget Analyst with the Legislative Fiscal Office.
Thank you. Morgan Rincon.
Hello, everybody. My name is Morgan Rincon. I'm a Business Relations Coordinator at the Oregon Commission for the Blind.
Thank you. Amber, would you like to go next?
Oh, thank you. Amber Heitz here. She/her/hers pronouns coming into life from Nike World Headquarters again, folks. I hope you're all having a good day.
Thank you. Randy, would you like to go last and next?
Sure, you bet. Thank you, Max. Randy Heitz, the Committee Chair, Business Enterprise and Community Committee. Have a great afternoon and a great meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Randy, we're having troubles hearing you. I don't know if you can change your audio to pick up better. Sounds muffled.
Yeah, I'm in a bad, I'm in a bad area, but I'm not, I don't plan on talking any further. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Have I forgotten anyone? Great. Let's go.
All right. Moving on, we've got public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? If so, we'll give you three minutes. Okay, hearing none. Oh, Randy, are you off mute for, to give public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, of course.
What was the girl's name from Nike?
Amber Heitz.
Okay. And what does she do?
She works at Nike.
I'm a Business Services Coordinator over here.
Okay. Can I get your contact information after?
Absolutely. Sure thing.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. We'll go into the Executive Director Report. Deisha, take it away.
Right. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. I always say Happy New Year in October because it is the first week of our federal fiscal year that began on October 1st. The fall is always a really, really busy time for the agency as we're wrapping up one federal fiscal year, and that includes wrapping up some reporting, both on the program side as well as the financial side, as well as case closures for folks. Oftentimes, there's a flurry of case closures for individuals who are ready to be closed out, and both our vocational rehabilitation program as well as independent living services. And so staff are busy in the throes of being in the case management system and the accounting systems kind of closing things out and starting things back up for the next federal fiscal year. It always feels funny to be in 2024 and say that we've started federal fiscal year 2025. So if it feels weird to say 2025, we are already starting to do that now here at the agency. October is also National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And so in honor of that, later in your agenda, we have our team that does business relations work with business and supporting job seekers who are blind and working with our workforce partners. They're going to provide you with an overview of those specialized services that we provide to just make sure that you're fully aware of that. So I'm looking forward to Jonathan and Morgan and Chantel's presentation later in your meeting. The theme for National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which is created by the U.S. Department of Labor, Office of Disability Employment and Policy, is Access to Good Jobs for All. And so Morgan and Chantel are planning a variety of events for the state of Oregon with our sister agency at the Department of Human Services, Vocational Rehabilitation Services. We are also hosting an OCB-specific event next week on Thursday, in which we will be doing an employer event on Thursday afternoon, which we're really excited to be doing that. So lots of fun activities happening related to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Any questions from Commissioners?
Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie.
So with the thing you were just discussing about the employers, will they be employers there looking to hire people? Or what is that all going to be about?
It's gonna be mostly, it's a great question. It's gonna be mostly education, talking about, you know, disability, the services that the commission provides. Oftentimes, one of the biggest barriers to employment is just the misperception of the blindness in general. So there'll be an opportunity to tour the training center, get to know the staff a little bit. And what we find is that, like any other hiring decision, it's based on relationships. And so there'll be an opportunity of both education, question and answer, getting to know the staff and the facilities. And Chantel and Morgan, Jonathan, if you have anything else that you think that I should have said, feel free to chime in.
This is Morgan. I think you stated it beautifully, Deisha, and we will also, once we get to share that wonderful information with our partners and businesses that attend, then we get to try to hook them into engaging with our clients and our job seekers in a variety of other activities moving forward, either like informational interviews, mock interviews, job site tours, job shadows. So more of that to come, but yeah, it's all that carrot that we dangle for our business.
Thank you, Morgan. All right. The last element around NDEAM, which is, of course, we create an acronym for everything in government, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, is Governor Kotek did sign a proclamation that October 2024 is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and it was a reminder that it is the 79th anniversary of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. But so that was a good surprise to me that this work has been happening for a long, long time and goes back 79 years. So that was interesting. Other questions about that before I move on? All right. The next item that I just wanted to alert you to is, of course, we are all familiar that October 15th of each year is White Canes Safety Day or White Canes Safety Awareness Day. And so usually throughout the state, there are a variety of activities to commemorate that. This particular year, we have been partnering with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the last several years around pedestrian safety and pedestrian safety awareness. And so Melinda and a couple of our staff and some consumers were able to participate recently in a photo shoot nearby our Portland office. So we will have some Oregon-specific materials that are actually being produced now that will commemorate White Canes Safety Day and not only the importance of recognizing pedestrian safety and the White Canes law and all of the responsibilities that go along with that for drivers and members of the public. It also hopefully will be a year-long campaign to just continue to provide education to the general public about the importance of being aware, being alert to pedestrians who are using a cane at any elements of the roadway. So we're really excited about that. And we have some stars amongst our staff that are part of the photos, the photo campaigns of those posters and materials that will be generated largely through ODOT's Pedestrian Safety Budget. So a really, really nice partnership and collaboration with ODOT, as well as, of course, another acronym, ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, and PBOB, the Portland Bureau of Transportation, are our two partners on that.
Deisha?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions.
That's okay. It's good. Keep me on my toes.
I know that my blind friends who live up in Portland are having issues traveling, especially by your school because of tents on the sidewalks. Is that getting any better?
The short answer is, that's a great question. It gets better. It depends on the day. I think that one of the things that you can tell that the governor has been raising, if you're looking at any of her communication, which actually this week, she had a dashboard on her progress related to houselessness and homelessness issues. We clear them out, and then, you know, a weekend will happen and books will show back up, and then they'll have to go back through the notification process. We're hoping that as the housing availability improves and the additional wraparound supports expand and improve, that that will reduce over time. But we have, I actually, on my computer, I have an account for the reporting tool where you can go in and take a photo and report camping activity or anything that's blocking the crosswalks, and we have to do that almost, for sure, a weekly basis, but sometimes a daily basis. So it does get better, but it is something that we have to continue to work on, for sure. Okay. Good question. All right. And then there is a major event happening on October 15th at the Portland International Airport. We're really, really excited about that. IRA is going to be showcasing the services that are available and navigating the brand-new airport. So there will be a large convention that happens on October 15th. And the airport, for those of you who aren't aware, went through a major kind of remodel, and it has a very open kind of landscape in the center where you check in. And so they will be celebrating the accessibility features at the Portland International Airport on October 15th. So we're really excited about that opportunity that hopefully will get some media attention and continue to promote, again, that kind of public awareness element to make sure that people are alert and aware of the importance of paying attention when we're driving and navigating the roads with people who are using the canes around us.
So Deisha, will that affect the hotel that's near the airport as well?
I don't.
The restaurant, because that's where we're having our convention at.
Will what affect it?
I'm asking if that, yeah, that'll affect it, anybody being able to get there.
I don't think so. I don't think it should at all. Yeah. Other questions about White Canes Safety Day? All right. I will turn it over then to our CFO, Kat Martin, to present the donations and the financial report.
Thank you, Deisha. Good afternoon, Chair McCollum, Commissioners and guests. Referring first to the bequest and donation statement, our cash balance in the fund increased by $634,000 during the month of July to $954,000 as of July 31st. As a cost savings measure to reduce our general fund obligation, the legislature directed OCB to use a portion of our donations to match the salary expense of one transition counselor. That obligation was once again carried forward to the 23-25 biennium we are currently operating within. And with $36,000 of donated funds expended through July 31st, the unobligated donations balance after adjustment is $955,000. I must also mention that in preparing my notes for this meeting, I discovered a formula error in the report submitted to you in advance of today's session, and I will be updating the donations report and asking Max to redistribute it to you all later today. Referencing the financial status report next, OCB's legislatively approved budget after the February 2024 short session of the legislature was $28,869,741, 67 positions and 67 full-time equivalents for 23-25, where $8,429,871 is general fund, $1,143,877 is other funds, and $19,299,483 federal fund limitation. Based upon 13 months' worth of activity as of July 31st, a variance to our legislatively approved budget continues to be projected for the end of the biennium with general fund fully utilized, other fund under approved limitation by $382,000 or 33.5% and federal funding under the approved limitation by $524,000 or 2.7%. Our total variance as of July 31st was projected to be $1,108,056 or 3.8% on an approved budget of $28,869,741 and projected expenditures of $27,761,685. That concludes my financial report out. Is there any questions I can answer for anyone?
And I will add that the donation, we did receive a bequest that was a portion of an estate of a consumer that was served many, many years ago that was sizable. So the jump in the donations balance was actually as a result of, we were one of, I think, four entities that received a portion of somebody's estate. So very, very generous, and obviously, our services touched them significantly. And it's been many, many years since our donations balance was reflected, the size that it is now. It used to be that our donations balance consistently was around the $1 million, a little bit over $1 million, and it was kind of whittled away over the bienniums with just to replace the state's obligation for match. So as a result of one person that was served many years ago, it is a little bit closer to what it had traditionally been before the donations fund was used for operations. So cool. It is lovely. And then the other element, just to alert you to, is we are awaiting guidance from the governor's office, but we anticipate that we would make another request to kind of shore up our budget for the remainder of the 23-25 biennium. And right now, the two items that we are under consideration while we await guidance from the governor's office as to what will be allowed for agencies to move forward is to, if you will recall, we have an ongoing issue related to the way a gap between how administrative positions are budgeted and how they're allowed to be paid with the indirect employees that are budgeted with federal funds that are actually paid for with state funds. We were able to make a little bit of progress in moving that issue last year. We're hoping to be able to select a few more positions to get correctly aligned to how the positions are funded this year as well. And then the other item is that we are likely going to request adding position authority for a driver that we use for an accommodation for individuals who are blind. We used to have this position some time ago, and the position was eliminated due to budget cuts. And because of the additional limitations around the use of temporary employees that makes an ongoing need prohibitive for that purpose, we will likely be requesting a permanent position to be able to not get out of compliance with the temporary employee requirements. So again, we're not certain what the governor's office is going to direct agencies to do, but if we get the green light, you will likely see that budget request in front of you at your December meeting.
So is this driver going to be used for those employees that are blind to be able to do their jobs, or?
Correct. Yeah. You got it. All right. And while we are on the topic of funding, if you are looking at the news and wondering what the federal government is doing in terms of providing funding to the budgets, they did pass, and it was signed on September 26th, a continuing resolution for funding the federal government for all 12 of the annual spending bills. And that was funded through, I think, the 20th of December. That is accurate. So they have funded the government through December 20th. And what typically happens, particularly in the election year, because the Congress will change as of January, most common scenario is that the, this year's Congress would approve the funding for the remainder of the federal fiscal year, 2025, that goes through next September. But they certainly have until December 20th to take whatever action that they will take. Occasionally, you'll see in many years, they will also just do a short-term spending bill. But more than likely, because of the lame-duck nature of the Congress, they typically just finish the funding bills for the remainder of the year and not pitch the issue to the new Congress that gets sworn in in January. But nothing is totally predictable with the political environment, that's for sure. Questions about the federal situation? All right. And then my final item then is, as you will recall, we have all-staff training that we conduct in person every other year. We used to, in the good old days, be able to bring in staff annually, and it is a cost. It's a costly activity to bring staff in for travel and associated costs. And so we went several years ago to an every-other-year cadence, and we're excited that even years are when we bring folks in person and not do a virtual event. So the week of November 4th, we have training sessions for staff, including an all-staff day where we will be together all day on Tuesday, and then some additional team-building activities on the morning of Wednesday, which would be Wednesday, the 6th. And then there's, you know, a variety of things like first aid and CPR. There's disability-specific training and just a variety of, you know, hopefully informative and enjoyable staff events for a variety of team members. Questions about the all-staff?
Deisha, this is Scott. Do you find that the every-other-year is adequate?
Um, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. I think that ideally, we would be bringing people together once a year. One of the things that has changed is as we experience a different cadence of turnover, because people typically stay in the jobs for three to five years, then all-staff is oftentimes, for people that work in the field, the first time that they're meeting in person. So it is unfortunate to not to be able to do that on an annual basis. But last time, we priced it out for the travel and per diem and the speakers and everything, it was, you know, I think about $35,000, if I recall. And this was before, you know, per diem is now higher, lodging is higher, all of those things. And it just, we just decided that because we have other professional development needs for our staff that are specific to their disciplines, that something had to give, and we felt like that was a reasonable approach with limited resources.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Johnson. Moving into new business, the first item on our agenda there is the transition of chair, and so that's me. Deisha, do you have anything you want to say, or?
Um, certainly. Well, Scott's not going anywhere yet, but if you're paying attention to the terms, Scott has served a partial term, a two-year session, and then two four-year terms. And the governor's office has basically opted to encourage us to find someone else because that first term that was two years was technically before the law changed when their four-year terms were enacted. Then technically, Scott has served the three terms. And so the education seat will be vacated when Scott is replaced. But that means that the commission will need to elect a new chair, and what we're excited about is a chair would be able to sit kind of in waiting and observe and shadow Scott while he's here, which he will be able to be serving in his role until he is replaced. And the agenda for the Senate confirmations for 2025 are not yet out. So we're not certain the timing of that replacement. But sometime in 2025, a new chair would need to stand in, and we would have to say goodbye to Scott.
It's very sad for me. I've enjoyed this time. And so, Deisha, do we want to move forward with individuals indicating interest in serving as chair and/or nominating other individuals? How would you like to move forward?
It's really the pleasure of the commission. Certainly, this is something that the commission can handle, however you so choose, generally in the past, which people have expressed interest, and then there is, you know, a nomination process like any other kind of motion that happens. And then if it seems like it's appropriate to move at this meeting, the commission can, you know, take action on those and actually motion and vote in a chair, or it can be tabled for a future meeting. It really depends on if you have folks coming forward.
Okay. Well, with that, I'd like to open the floor to anybody who may be interested. I'd also like to I'd also like to just submit a nomination. Uh, and so I'll get us started with a nomination, and then certainly, Commissioner, you could nominate yourself or nominate somebody else, and then we can um see kind of how that goes. But I I'd like to open the this process with nominating Nadira Broom to be the next chair. Nadira, would you accept that nomination?
Thank you, Scott. Yes, I would accept the nomination.
Wonderful. So we have at least one person on our slate of potential chairs. Is there anyone else who would like to be the next chair? It is a wonderful uh opportunity. I will say it's there is some outside work that goes into this. It's not a lot, but you do meet with Jade Deja to set the meet uh meeting agendas. Uh, certainly, if things come up, um Deja and I are typically on the phone or in a Zoom meeting pretty quickly i- if there is something to talk about in short order, but um there is a little bit of extra work, but not a ton, and um you also get uh the opportunity to talk anytime you want. I don't know if that's but uh is there anyone else who would like to uh either nominate somebody else or nominate themselves?
I have a question, Scott, Chair.
You got it.
Are you gonna still be around? Because I feel like I just barely got to know you. I've enjoyed hearing your voice.
Oh, well, thank you. That's very kind of you. Yes, I I will be around. I mean, that's kind of the nice thing here, is that I'll be around at least uh into the December meeting and uh to help, and and I'm in this field for good, so uh I'm not leaving the Washington State School for the Blind and uh pretty connected down there in Oregon as well.
Okay, good.
But thank you for that.
You're welcome.
This is uh Amber. I have a quick question. Is there any way we can have a little bit more explanation about what a board versus chair is?
Oh, yeah, the board, uh the chair is is a board member and just an elected, I guess, elected or appointed, like elected individual uh among the among the board members to serve as the chair. And you get paid lots and lots of money to do it. You get compensated with love and kindness, but it's it's definitely worth it.
Okay, thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, I'm not noticing that a lot of people are are chomping at the bit. Um, I have made that nomination, I guess. Perhaps I'd like to ask the my fellow commissioners, would you like to take another meeting to think about this, or or do you wanna take a vote?
I do, I would like to do a vote.
Okay, got one, one uh mention for a vote? Anyone else?
This is Cassie. I'm okay to move forward with a vote.
Okay, well, wh- why don't we do this? Um, I'm hearing that there's a vote. Why don't, why don't we take it like a motion? Um, and so I heard i- if I can uh state for you, Stephanie, it sounds like you made a motion to vote, and then if if that's fair to say, Cassie, you seconded that motion, is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just first say, all in favor to take a vote, please indicate aye.
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 Any opposed to take a vote today? Well, hearing none, let's take a vote then. All in favor of Nadira Broom being the next commission chair, please indicate aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion and a second first?
Oh, that's probably a good idea. Good call, Cassie. That's, I like that. Let's do that. So um there, I I'll make the motion since I uh nominated Nadira, so I motion that Nadira Broom be the next commission chair. Is there a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Who is a race for second, is Stephanie or Cassie? I think you jumped on there.
Either way.
Now, we'll take that vote. Thank you for the the uh correction there, Cassie. All in favor of Nadira Broom being our next chair, please indicate aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Well, that motion carries, and so Nadira Broom, you will be our next chair for the Oregon Commission for the Blind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and I'm looking forward to learning from you, Scott. And I hope I do a good job. I have some big shoes to fill.
Oh, I think you got this. I'm I'm not worried one bit. I have a thousand percent confidence in you, Nadira, so. Uh, well, thank you so much for stepping up, and my agenda just went away. I gotta make sure I bring it back up. There we go. Okay, so Nadira is our next uh chair. Nadira, do you wanna say anything else?
Um, uh, no, I just, I just, I'm looking forward to, you know, moving forward and continuing to you know, work to to ensure that blind Oregonians, you know, have all the resources that they need and yeah, to do what I signed up to do with this board, yeah.
Excellent. Well, welcome again, and of course, I will support you as much as you like through this process.
Thank you.
Okay, good, I got my agenda back up. Next up on our agenda is the overview of the Agency Business Engagement Services. Not sure who's gonna take that, maybe Angel? Not sure, Jonathan?
It'll be me, Chair.
Jonathan, take it away.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to see you again. Uh, I think last time I was with you was February, and we were approving the state plan, so things have been progressing. Um, again, my name is Jonathan. I serve as the Workforce Innovation Manager. And our goal for this brief update is to share what is going on in the world of business relations. And part of having successful clients' employment outcomes includes cultivating relationships with possible employers and providing awareness as it relates to blindness, assistive technology implementation, and of course, a talent pipeline, um which you hinted at earlier, so I can tell you're already on board. Thank you. Um, I'll start this time by sharing a high-level overview of how we arrived at our current team, and then pass it on to Morgan and Chantel, our two bus- business relations coordinators, who will dive deeper into their efforts. So brief hist- brief history, in twenty-fourteen, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, also known as WIOA, was passed, and it was implemented in twenty-sixteen. This act reauthorized the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen-seventy-three, which allows us to do the work we do in vocational rehabilitation. And with WIOA, there are six metrics that the state, including OCB, reports on as a whole, along with a prescribed approach to the work we ju- to the work we do, which is called a dual customer model. And agencies are to approach both the client and the business as a customer of the agency, and that is for us, the purposes of today, that's really what we're focusing on. At OCB, this team of business relations falls under the VR VR department and is composed of business relations coordinators who serve statewide and assistive technology specialists that serve by region. And these two groups of employees provide their expertise in direct service to clients and also to employers. The agency believes the work done by the business relations coordinators is crucial to both fulfilling the mission of WIOA, but also achieving those employ- client employment goals. Uh, my introduction is intentionally brief, so that you can hear directly uh from a group boots-on-the-ground perspective, and I'll turn it over to Morgan and Chantel.
Thank you, Jonathan. Hello, everybody. This is Morgan again, and I will uh kick off uh describing what business relations is and what we do for the Commission for the Blind. So I have uh been a business relations coordinator with OCB since twenty-four, so about that time that Jonathan was talking about the diet, WIOA um implementation, I was lucky to be here and be working in this role and be able to s- to help um OCB create and develop out what business relations should uh look like and how we can effectively serve both Oregonians um who are blind and businesses throughout the state. So um a broad overview, I'm gonna try and cover as much as I can in a short few minutes. Um, but I wanted to talk about um partner with. So business relations is really, we're we're partners, we li- we're a liaison, a bridge um with our vocational counselor team. We're a part of the VR team. We also work very closely with the Assistive Technology Workforce Team um that Jonathan uh it manages. And um we also work with our job coaches and job developers. We partner very closely with the WorkSource and the business service specialists that work within the Oregon Employment Department. And we partner very, very closely with our uh big sister agency Vocational Rehabilitation, Workforce and Business Team, as well as work as part of a national employment team underneath the um Council of State uh agencies of VR, um the CSA VR net. And so business relations encompasses a lot. Oh, and did I mention we work directly with our job seekers? That is also a component. Um, so to elaborate a little bit on what what that means, um as part of the VR team, we really want to strengthen a relationship. Business relations and VR counseling go hand in hand. Um, so we make the effort, Chantel and I as business relations, make the effort to really be a part of that team and do monthly staffings with each counselor. So that means building relationships with the counselors, getting to know their caseload, getting to understand their needs and how we can support them. And every office and every region is different. We also get to know um our staff in each office, so we take the time to go to monthly um regional or field office meetings, so that we we are seen and um really recognized throughout the agency as part of everybody, everybody's team. Uh, we have meetings twice a month called Jobsville. This is something that we invite all of our job developers and job coaches to attend with all of our counselors. And of course, um Angel, you know, Director of VR, and Jonathan, WIOA, or Workforce Manager, and Jo- Jim with it within the Training Center. We all come together twice a month to talk about client needs and employer needs. Um, business relations also provides highlights and information every month in the VR counselor meetings to really help counselors be on top of uh business relations information around LinkedIn, um progressive employment model, career pathways, labor market information. We provide ongoing training on these topics throughout the entire year for our staff internally and also externally for our community rehabilitation providers. We get to be a part of this really cool workforce team, which includes assistive technology instructors, and we meet one, once a month with them as well. Part of the highlight for this um team is really uh responding to requests that businesses have around assistive technology and accessibility in the workplace. And so Chantel and I are often requested to do disability awareness trainings and blind etiquette trainings. We also get to request our assistive technology staff to attend to those trainings with us to do demonstrations and accessibility consultations with those businesses. We contract out with job developers and job coaches. This is a really important aspect of vocational counseling and and career development. We look at job coaches and developers as an extension of our business services, and so we value those partnerships. And they're a huge asset to the success of our clients through that progressive employment model, really connecting with businesses and providing opportunities for our clients to engage with businesses and businesses to engage with our clients. So it's important that we recruit and assist in that process of bringing qualified vendors on to work with our staff, to work with our counselors and our clients. Um, Chantel and I, as part of business relations, provide one uh onboarding training for all of our CRPs, community rehab providers that provide that job development coaching for our clients. We provide ongoing support to those and uh contractors as well, not only through that twice-a-month meeting that I mentioned, Jobsville, but also um we provide services alongside with our job developers to support those businesses and the clients. And we do um trainings to those job developers five times a year at no cost. We are a partner with the WorkSource. That is, the under WIOA, we are um, you know, regulated to work closely with the other WorkSource partners underneath the Oregon Employment Department. And so with that, both Chantel and I are co-located in WorkSource offices, which means we get to be um shoulder-to-shoulder with our partners at the Employment Department, along with all of the other uh partners that serve underneath uh WIOA and WorkSource. And um it's really important that they know who we are, and they know who to go to when they have a question. If they have a job seeker who's blind or low vision, they can come to us and then find the resources that they need to be able to serve those job seekers. It's also really important that we get to know their business service staff, because they are out making connections with businesses, and it helps our agency have an opportunity to um be connected to those uh businesses um who are actively recruiting. And we, there is nine workforce boards across the state, uh countless WorkSource offices, so too many to to list, but we try really hard to have a presence in all of those regions. If not, um you know, physically co-located, we are virtually attending those business service meetings and being present and representing OCB again, for our job seekers to have more opportunities to connect with businesses. Um, a lot of what we do is is training, like Deja said. So not only training businesses, but we train those partners as well. Um, we work very, very closely with the General Voc Rehab Team. They have a work of fairly new uh workforce and business team, and um we act as uh net points of contact. So the National Employment Team on a national level has points of contact for each state with each VR agency, and Kim uh Copeland and I get to be uh the points of contact for um any national movements or national uh job openings uh that we can share with our agencies. And uh we partner, partner very closely, so I'd say for the last two years, um we have been providing uh services to businesses um through monthly lunch and learns. Every other month, we have a lunch and learn dedicated to business. This is a training series that really helps uh businesses understand different aspects around diversity, equity, inclusion and access and working with people with disabilities in the workplace. And so every month that we do a training, we have a, we host a different topic. For example, in August, OCB um we led the series, and we had assistive technology uh present on AT in the workplace, and they did demonstrations as well for that lunch and learn. Uh, we provide uh services to business jointly. So Voc Rehab and Commission for the Blind go in and provide disability awareness trainings and other consultations around DEIA for um disability in the workplace, and we do that um in partnership. So it's a very, very important relationship that we um continue to um cultivate. And Chantel, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, um as you said, uh, Tim does the whole state of Oregon. There is regional um employees as well, and Gary serves uh the Portland area. Just this week, Gary and I shared a tabling opportunity um with the Community Service Network. So we really like to go out as a team um and help inform the public of um what could be confusing to navigate and what agency serves as who and what that referral process is like, and also when they request this disability awareness training. So we like to come in together and really just be unified in that way, so it's easier for people to understand the landscape, how to navigate it.
Yes, that is the name of the game, is that partnership is so important. And the the list, uh the menu of services that we jointly provide to businesses, VR and Commission for the Blind Business and Workforce Teams do recruitment support. We coordinate accommodation assessments. A couple of examples of big um accommodation assessments that we've done is with Nike, Genentech, and OHSU. We provide disability awareness trainings around unconscious bias and cultivating inclusive workplace culture. Um, again, some big names for that is Lewis and Clark College, Portland General Electric, OHSU, Department of Administrative Services, and more recently, the Office of um Government Ethics Commission. We do resource and referral outreach is really important for us. We do our best to do as much rural outreach as we can for the state. And we really push, we we emphasize creative connections. So within the progressive employment model here at OCB, we try to set up opportunities for meet and greets with businesses to connect with our job seekers. We do informational interviews, job shadows, mock interviews, work experiences. Those are all things that we highlight and offer to employers as long, uh as well as business um spotlight, so businesses have a chance to come in and talk to our job seekers and our counselors about what they do and and how they, their, what their recruitment process looks like. A couple of highlights would be the Bureau of Land Management, Mod Pizza, Bonneville Power Administration, Canteen and Knife River, so a whole uh variety of businesses. They come to us and say, we wanna work with you, how can we do this? Uh, we also do in-person and virtual networking events, and as Deja said, this is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, so this is a big time for us. We've got a lot going on um that I'll let Chantel describe in a little more detail, but finally, I just wanted to mention But finally, I just wanted to mention the direct client support that we do. We offer a job development and networking group for our job seekers. And we do one-on-one services as needed to really help those clients hone in on their resume and interview skills and connect with businesses. So, again, we work in tandem with counselors and our job developers. And we do support around summer work experience program to help identify businesses who are open and willing to host our students for that. So, Chantel, if you want to share a little bit more about our in-deem events?
Yeah, so next, this coming Thursday, we are hosting an in-person event for three hours for employers, HR recruiters, even our vendors can join. It is really to shine the light on diversifying the pipeline of talented applicants and really getting businesses on board with working with us. A lot of times, they feel really inspired and their minds get opened after they tour OCB and understand this is a technology that can be used in the workplace and what all roles are possible for our clients. After that, Morgan and I will talk to everybody there about the progressive employment model and all the ways that they can partner with us, whether that they have a job opening right now and they want to explore if their workplace is accessible, if they want us to train and provide a disability awareness training to their workplace. Or maybe they just want to volunteer for a mock interview for one of our clients. So, there's so many opportunities our clients can really build our network with the businesses we're reaching out to. And we do host these kind of events throughout the year, but we really launched a large one in October with this focus.
And I don't want to fail to mention the another National Disability Employment Awareness Month activity happening in partnership with the Office of Developmental Disabilities and Vocational Rehabilitation is a month-long series of lunch and learns every Tuesday. Throughout the month is a different topic. And Voc Rehab, along with Commission for the Blind, we get to host the third Tuesday this month. And our, our theme or our title for our lunch and learn is Good Jobs for All Beyond the Bias. And this is just a really neat opportunity. We have three highlighted guest speakers who will be talking about their success in the workplace. One of them is a previous OCB client, Neil Lacy, who works as a human service specialist at the Department of Human Services. And again, this is all about education and creating opportunities, helping businesses overcome their bias. A recent term that I heard when we were at the National Employment Team Summit was uneducated bias. And I think that that resonates with us because a lot of what we see in the workplace and with businesses is just folks not knowing. They just don't know what they don't know. So, our job is to speak to them and help to provide information and help them open their minds, open their hearts and open their doors to working with a variety of individuals. So, with that, I know it's a lot and we spoke fast, but thank you so much for the time and the opportunity to present with you all.
I have a few questions.
Whoa, you got ahead of me there, Stephanie.
Take it away. Sorry, sorry. Okay, so first of all, I heard a lot about assistive technology. And you know, for blind people, that is the biggest barrier for job development. How is that being addressed? How is that changing?
Well, we do what we can with the team that we have. So, that is one of the really cool things that we've done here at OCB is creating a workforce team that has assistive technology specialists in it. So, our specialists speak to businesses. They are willing to go onsite and provide demonstrations and also do light touch accessibility assessments of their products. And to really help a business identify is, you know, where they may have some issues and how they can solve those issues. So, and this is all open and available to businesses. This is why we want to share the information to them. This is free to business to access. This is why we exist to help them. And so, you know, everything takes time. We're paving paths, but it is receptive. The businesses are asking for it. They are taking us up on the opportunity and we are creating opportunities as.
Okay, do you go to the whole state of Oregon? Because down south, will we benefit from that? Because I know you guys are.
Absolutely, that's what I love is how we have representatives from each of our field offices. So, down south, we have a new, a fairly new assistive technology instructor on our team, Tony Gebhardt.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's great. And he jumped right in and he is speaking with business and doing just that.
Okay, another question is, do you guys still do the paid work experiences? Because you know, a lot of blind people have never even had, have had a job. I've got a couple of members of NFB who have degrees but have never had a job. And they're like in their 30s. So, a lot of times, they don't know the etiquette. They don't know how to speak up for themselves. Is that something that they're being trained as well to? Because I know in my job, they never had a blind person either. And I've been there for three years now and I was the one that had to educate them.
Yep, absolutely, Stephanie. We do the progressive employment model. And that is part of the education that Chantel and I provide to businesses is how we can support clients through paid work experiences.
I didn't want to add Stephanie to that. Morgan and I also lead a job development network group. So, for those clients that are trying to get back in the workplace or don't really have the adequate down of working in a professional space, we do a 10-week workshop basically with a group of clients throughout the year to teach them those things.
Nice, nice, good. Because yeah, I hadn't been working a long time either. And I know having those paid work experiences on my resume really, I think, opened doors for me. Yeah, thank you, those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, any other questions from commissioners?
I don't have a question, this is Amber, but I do have a shout out just to how amazing everything has been going over here at Nike. I don't know how much we all know about the Project Search internship program that started here this month, but it's so exciting. It's a nine-month-long process for lots of folks to come in and get experience on their resumes. And it's just, it's going to be so fun. We're really super pumped and excited about it. And of course, coming from Voc Rehab and OCB, I'm just like, oh, my gosh, that is so rad. And sign me up to help. So, yeah, we're totally pumped and hopefully this is our first year. So, hopefully it'll just keep going. That's the plan.
Nice.
Very good. Anything else, commissioners?
No.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, Morgan and Chantel. Appreciate all the work you're doing. It's critical work out there. I think, I think the biggest barrier that blind and low vision individuals face in our workforce are the attitudes of other people, particularly sighted people who don't, don't know, haven't had experience. And yeah, it's such a critical role that y'all are playing and getting in there. So, I appreciate that, that you're doing that. Next up on our agenda is the statewide customer service policy development. And Deja, I believe you're going to take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, you may recall when Governor Kotek took office, she identified several expectations for state agency leaders. And one of those that has evolved over time is the expectation that there is some customer service standards that are enterprise-wide and then that individual agencies will also develop and adopt a personalized to their specific business model, a customer service policy. And so, we're expecting to have some statewide guidance later this month. And then there will be an expectation that we generate a customer service policy by the end of the year. And some of the things that they're looking at is, is kind of the purpose, I should say, is making sure that all agencies have universally accessible, which we love, right? They're talking about accessibility, the win for us. And responsive communication with Oregonians and agency business partners, reinforce an equitable customer service culture across the enterprise, continuously measuring customer service feedback, which as Angel will describe, we have a customer service measure that we annually report to the legislature, continuously drive improvement. And really what they're looking at is making sure that's reinforcing the professional workplace standards that the state has that include being respectful and supporting the values and mission of the agency and state government overall. And that it's inclusive to offer universal communication preferences. It communicates and identifies operating hours. One of the things that did not change for our organization was the pandemic dramatically shifted some of the, largely the smaller organizations to predominantly a remote work environment. And some of them, in a combination of due to budget tight, tightening and/or just the practicality, closed down their brick and mortar offices or significantly limited their office hours. So, one of the things that we're doing as an enterprise is to clearly articulate office hours. For our agency, we have maintained standardized office hours even during the pandemic. We were open for appointments Monday through Friday, eight to five. So, we will continue to articulate that. But also, we're really excited to see one of the expectations is to maintain accessible websites with relevant experience. So, again, looking for this particular language around accessibility, we're really, really excited about and making sure that the contact information is clear. There's also an expectation of responsiveness to the public. For example, one of the things that we've had in place for some time is an expectation, a service expectation that we provided a response to, you know, somebody reaching out to us within 24 to 48 hours. And so, the responsiveness expectations is the next business day, from what I understand that we can expect. And also, if you're out of the office, making sure that you have an out-of-office reply. So, folks know if you're not able to get in contact, but that you're providing alternate contact information. And so, the goal will be that by the end of the calendar year that we will provide a written customer service policy that we would obviously post. And we would share that with the commission. So, I mostly just wanted you to be aware of it and see if there are any questions or any considerations that the commission would like us to do as we're creating this policy.
I'm sorry, so, out of curiosity, is there an official standard for her? Something like complaints are handled right now?
That's a great question. It depends, the short answer would be yes, and it depends on the nature of the complaint. If we're talking about client complaints, that information is available in, on our website. And then there, if it's, you know, other types of complaints in terms of if it's employees, those are handled through the standardized process of the Chief Human Resource Office. Good question.
So, you're saying if a client has a complaint, they go through a website?
There is a, it depends on the program, but each of the programs has its own separate distinct process that are mostly defined in federal law, the process.
Any other questions, commissioners? Sounds like you'll be establishing a policy for some pretty just good business practices. So, I'm sure that'll go well. I'm not worried about it one bit. Let's move into our old business then. First item on the agenda there is the B E, Business Enterprise Program update. And I think you're taking that one today, Jason, Deja?
I am. Ron, since his regrets, he was called away at the last minute unexpectedly. And so, I have his notes that he took a picture of and I printed out here. Some of the things that he wanted to make sure to alert your attention to is that we've been working on some new business models. I think he kind of teased it in August of the food carts. And those food carts, we are envisioning there would be two locations. But the first being, they're, the first of them are being built right now as we speak. So, that's really exciting. And it is a partnership with the Oregon Parks and Recreation. So, we're also going to be working with them on the branding. And at first, the first two, one of them will be coffee and then one of them will be a lunch truck. So, really, really excited about that. He also will be experiencing a retirement in the program. And we've already hired Teresa Field is one of the staff that does the contracts work with other agencies. She is retiring at the end of the year and we have already replaced her. And Angelica has already started training behind Teresa. And we're really excited about that process. And then, one of the other items that Ron talked about is in regards to addressing the concerns of the elected committee with assigning vending and increasing the equity of the income across the program. And he has here listed that with, together with the BECC, they've identified two routes that have been prioritized by increasing the earnings to meet the average income for the vending facility managers. So, that work that he talks about conceptually in August is moving forward. And we're really excited about being able to assign additional opportunities to those vending facility managers.
Great, are there any questions for Deja? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward to our next agenda item. It's the review of the annual performance measure progress report. Angel, I'm guessing that one's you.
That would be me, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, commissioners. So, this, as you all have recently participated in, our annual performance progress report or AARP is for our key performance measures. These are reported to the legislature. And so, we appreciate your participation in the process. I know that all of you have gotten a copy of the report, so I won't go into any level of detail. You are welcome to dig in to see what our numbers are. But I will say the primary areas that we're looking at are going to be, first, our employment. And second quarter after exit, which I'll talk about in just a minute, just because that one can get a little bit confusing. And then, we are looking at our customer satisfaction measures as it relates to IL and our combined measure as it relates to customer satisfaction for independent living, older blind, part B, as well as vocational rehabilitation. And we're right up there in the 90s. So, that's always good for us to be able to see. And then, of course, the business practices, best practices for commission boards that you all participated in the survey. And again, we're up there in the 90s, which is, which is great. And all of these have graphics associated, but also have text associated. So, anybody who can't see those graphics, you can dig into the text and get an understanding about what we're capturing there. The one thing I did want to note in terms of the first measure, which is that second quarter after exit for clients who are in the vocational rehabilitation program. The reason that one's a little bit confusing and the narrative speaks to this is that it is in relationship to clients, not just who have achieved an employment outcome, but it's actually, it is a federal measure. So, we didn't, we did not create this measure. It measures clients also who were not able to successfully complete the vocational rehabilitation program. So, as you might imagine, that ratio is going to look very different because we are looking at those people, not only who closed with an employment outcome, but those who didn't. And that's why we are still in the process of agreeing statewide on that measure. But we do have an agreed upon target with the Rehabilitation Services Administration. But we're still in process as a state for landing. But we're still in process as a state for landing what that would look like in terms of joint measure with our workforce innovation partners throughout the state of Oregon. So I'm hopeful that helps. The other thing that can be a little bit confusing about these reports is because they're due in September, they reflect the prior FFY. So the prior federal year reporting, which ended in 2023. So it does look a little bit confusing when you're looking at it because it feels like it should be more current data, but it's actually a look back in the prior FFY. So if anybody has dug into this and has any questions, I'm sure happy to answer them now or, or in the future.
Thanks, Angel. We'll open the floor up to commissioners. Any questions? Right. Kind of a quiet group today. Friday, I get it. All right. Well, thank you very much, Angel.
Thank you so much.
All right. Our last agenda item for the day, besides adjourning, is the federal compliance audit follow-up. And Deja, you taking that one?
I am indeed. The item that we wanted to just alert you to commissioners, if you will recall, our regular federal compliance audit that we get every three years, one of the findings and recommendations was for us to seek clarification from the Rehabilitation Services Administration for the allowability of the use of vocational rehabilitation funds for the Business Enterprise Program. We provided you a response. And the short answer is it is allowable to use the Vocational Rehabilitation Award sometimes, but not all the time. And then the letter concludes to say that, that's certainly reasonable and expected that when federal VR funds are not allowed, that it is reasonable and appropriate that you would access state funds to do that. So the, if, if you were to ask my opinion, I do think that this is a narrow interpretation that negatively affects states who are administering the, the Business Enterprise Randolph Shepherd Act program around the country. A lot of times when we're historically looking at how we've used attorney fees to administer the program, it has included things like going after the Veterans Administration to enforce the federal priority. And that was a costly endeavor. So you know, I think the unfortunate circumstances are there may be situations in which we do not have sufficient state resources that federal funds would have made that a doable task. Future activities like that may be constrained by our ability to pay for them. But we have our response. We were, we were able to update the Secretary of State. And we've also adjusted our internal processes and are in the process of finalizing the documentation around that to be able to differentiate when a bill comes in. If there are any unallowable with federal dollars, legal professional services costs, then we would be paying those with state only funds. But we have not had any such search circumstance to have to differentiate that since this letter came in. But if we have to in the process, then our CFO will differentiate those costs and I will sign off on the differentiation and then accounting will pay them accordingly. Any questions about the process?
I don't know if it's a question necessarily. This is Amber again, but just curious about the VA VR and curious also if there's any partnership with tribal VR for the commission, if that's even like something we can tap into too. Just, just a thought.
Yeah. So Amber, we do have actually quite a bit of work that we do with our tribal partners. And actually the VA to a certain extent, they have their own separate rehabilitation process specific to blindness that largely works with veterans, many of which are, you know, aging veterans who have age-related vision loss, but we certainly collaborate and partner with both of those systems as needed.
I assume so, but just thank you for that.
No other questions, commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Well, it's that time. It's adjournment time. I appreciate everybody being here. I want to congratulate Nadira for accepting and being, well, being nominated and accepting and then being voted as our next chair. Nadira, I look forward to working with you over the next two months and and then I'm sure that Deja and everybody else looks forward to working with you. It's going to be great. With that said, it is 2:18. We will call this meeting to a close. Thank you, everybody. Happy Friday and have a wonderful weekend.